You're watching the MISD Districts Two, Four, and Seven debates. Sponsored by Alyssa Noel Wagner, Diamondback Energy, and Permian Resources.
Good evening and welcome to Basin PBS where we're coming to you live from the Anwar Family Studio. I'm Pat Canty, Board President for Basin PBS, and on behalf of the Board, thank you for joining us tonight. We're honored to host the 2024 Midland ISD Districts Two, Four, and Seven debates. Basin PBS is known for its quality programming, where we provide not only education but also entertainment. Tonight's program is a culmination of our mission to educate and inform. This program is made possible by our members and generously sponsored by Alyssa Noel Wagner, Diamondback Energy, and Permian Resources. We are thrilled to have a small studio audience and have all of you, our Basin PBS supporters, watching at home on Channels 13 or 36, or live on our Facebook page or YouTube channel. Plus, we are also running live on KWWT, my network TV. Joining me tonight at the moderator's desk is Mary-Kate Hamilton with First Alert 7.
Thank you very much, Pat. Tonight's format is a bit different. The show will consist of three segments. Each segment is approximately 27 minutes in length, and we'll have a two-minute break in between where we will switch out the candidates. Candidates who are not on air but are waiting for their segment have been sequestered as to not hear any of the questions. Our questions were developed by our team of moderators, a small representation from the community, and our Facebook page, where our community will be given the opportunity to submit questions. During the time constraint, we will only read the rules once, but all candidates have received the rules in advance. They are familiar with tonight's format. The debate will begin with each candidate in order of how they're listed on the ballot, with two minutes for their opening remarks. After these opening remarks, the moderators will pose a series of general questions. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. In the event a candidate's answer to a question invokes the name or the policy position of one or more opponents, the moderators, at our sole discretion, will give the referenced candidates 30 seconds to respond. It is important to note, an individual candidate may also be asked a direct question that may be because of a statement or a policy position he or she has made during their campaign. The candidate will have one minute to answer that direct question. The 30-second rebuttal rule will still apply. At the conclusion of the questions, each candidate will be given two minutes, time permitting, for closing statements. You don't have to use all the time you're given, but it's encouraged you do so, as this is your time to let your constituents know your stance on policies. This is a live broadcast, so flash photography, making loud noises, or other disruptive actions or comments are not allowed. Now, let's get started and meet our candidates for Midland ISD District Two, Mr. Angel Hernandez.
Good evening.
And Mr. Robert Marquez.
Good evening.
Thank you both so much for being here. We will now begin with opening statements. I'd like to remind the candidates that each will have two minutes. Mr. Angel Hernandez, we'll start with you and your opening statement.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for inviting me here. One thing that was, had been brought to my attention was, MISD has got a, an open-door policy that is sometimes not quite adhered to. I believe this needs to be addressed, and the item that really bothers me is that the teachers have a chance to talk to the board members, but not in person, as I understand. MISD is doing a adequate job of educating our children, but it needs to be improved upon. Our literacy rating is quite low. We seem to be throwing money at education but not getting our return on it. I would like to see this change for the better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Robert Marquez, your opening statement.
Thank you. I would like to welcome the Permian Basin to our discussion here. One of the most important discussions that we can have in this town is regarding the education system that exists, because it's through this education system that promotes the outcome of how your Permian Basin residents end up living. It not only promotes living quality of life, it promotes job growth. Not only does it promote job growth, it promotes stability within companies. Not only does it promote stability in companies, it promotes growing your own type mentality here in Midland, which is a belief that has been shared by a lot of people in the community and businesses, that we educate in a way that keeps our own here to support our industry. I'm extremely proud that I belong to the oil and gas industry, and the fact that my years serving as Board Trustee for District Two, to see the philanthropy, to see the community members, to see the individual contributors contribute to an education system with the hope of better outcomes on a continuous basis. So, I would like to share a little bit about my story. I've been a resident in Midland since 1977. I'm originally from Pegas, Texas. I'm a United States Air Force veteran, extremely proud of that, and I'm serving because I want to get back to my community. And we can have a collaborative discussion here in a minute, as the questions go on, about how that committee can go forward. Thank you.
We'll now begin with our first question.
Midland taxpayers voted on and passed a $1.4 billion bond in November of 2023 with 56% of the vote. How, as a board member, would you ensure that these dollars are used efficiently? And how do you plan to communicate that progress to the public? Mr. Hernandez, we'll start with you.
First of all, during the previous bond that was passed years ago, I was a member of the Building Committee to make sure that we would keep our tax money working hard for us. I think this needs to continue with this bond. This bond is quite a large bond, by any stretch of the imagination, and we need to have people in place to ensure that there is no waste, and there is, that everything is finished on time and under budget. While I was on the Board previously, we had two schools come in, both under budget, and I believe one of them was about 10 days ahead of schedule. That is extremely important, because taxpayer money is, I treat it as if we're my own, because it has to be stretched to its limit. Thank you.
Mr. Marquez?
Well, great question. I'm extremely proud that Midland has passed a $1.4 billion bond. And Benjamin Franklin said that the best investment you can make is in yourself. And I think by the actions of the voters, they have said that they want to invest in themselves, which is this community. They see the growth, they see the population that's coming in, so they're willing to say yes to the investment of Midland, Texas. So, it's kind of changed, we've kind of gone over a hurdle of investment in the sense of our community, because we're a bit behind. You know, to reference to our taxpayers and how this money is handled, you know, once again, it's an investment in the community, but, you know, not only spending, I'm sorry, did I go?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Plans for the bond include a new elementary school, two brand-new high schools, and the conversion of two existing high schools to new middle schools, all to be completed by 2028. How will the district ensure that MISD can accommodate and sustain that growth? We'll start with you, Mr. Marquez.
Yes, sir. You know, one of the things we've done prior to the bond, we went on a roadshow, and we were transparent with all our planning, future planning, and the logistics, especially the logistics as to how the students were, once the high schools are built, how they will migrate up and fulfill the seats. So, lots of planning, lots of work, but one of the things we've done extremely well is communicate with our community via roadshow, in the sense of explaining it as best we can publicly to anybody that'll listen to us, about how that's going to transpire.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez? Previously, the previous bonds that were passed were, we were told that the growth in Midland never, ever drops off as far as student growth. It plateaus out, it only continues to climb. And I foresee Midland growing exponentially, especially now with the new technology in the oil field. And I believe that with that in mind, I don't think we're going to have any issues as far as the new schools, getting the good qualified teachers in there. Those highly qualified teachers, that's going to be the challenge. And I think once we've got that in, our students will be the winners in this. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez, we are going to build on that. MISD estimates a growth of about 400 students per year, with over 32,000 expected in the next 10 years. This is all according to the district's website. Of course, more students means more teachers. How important is teacher attraction and retention? And do you have a plan to address the ever-growing need for qualified staff across the district? We'll start with you, Mr. Hernandez.
Well, first of all, you need to go out and find those teachers, those who are highly qualified, those who have a track record of success, and bring them here, show them what we've got, if it means increased salary, benefits, whatever it takes to get them here. The only winners will be our students. Regardless of what the price is, our students must be at the center of our attention, and if that's not it, we're in the wrong business. If it means having to go ahead and provide some kind of a teachage for them in order to retain them, whatever it takes, incentives, anything, to make sure that our teachers, we get the best and we keep them, get the most bang for your buck. Thank you.
Mr. Marquez?
So, that's an excellent question, because therein lies, in the core of that question lies the future of a lot of things that are being programmed and looked at for Midland ISD. But 70 years ago, we had 24,692 students approximately. We've grown approximately 4,800 students during that time. It's about 19.5%, growth in our system. So, the system has grown, has grown a lot. And with that system growth, one of the ways we've gone about having teacher retention is by providing housing. Also, is by providing an accountability system that they can go online and look and see what is the end goal. So, being transparent with our teachers, helping them provide housing assistance is some of the things that is going to take us forward.
Thank you.
Increasing school safety was an additional operative of the 2023 bond. What do you believe is the most effective, what's most effective in protecting students from violence? And what additional safety measures would you put into place, if any? Mr. Marquez, we'll start with you.
Well, excellent question. One of the most things people are concerned about these days is security. And so, currently, we have about 35 police officers. But what I want to point out is that while the state has mandated that we have one police officer per campus, that mandate came without any funding. So, you know, regardless of the funding, we've gone and done the work of hiring the officers. And, you know, it's just, the time is very short to go in the deep detail about all the programs that are effective for the school district, as to how we're going to mitigate, you know, safety incidents, and how we're protecting children in the future. But protecting children is our number-one priority every day as the school day starts. So, thank you.
Great. Mr. Hernandez? Yes, sir. Well, currently, MISD is hiring contract officers via DPS, Midland SO, and other agencies to fill in the gaps. I would like to see MISD go out and look for good officers, experienced officers. Not only that, but to have two other officers as rovers and a full-time investigator. On my time on the Board previously, it took me eight years, but we got a K-9 program started, and I think that was a, that was a success, and it still is. As far as how are we going to keep the school safe, you can do that by many different ways, construction of safety barriers, camera systems, anything that, everything that comes to mind. As Mr. Marquez said, student safety is paramount. We can't, we can't just go cheap on that. We've got to go out and do the very best we can with it. Thank you.
Midland ISD voluntarily released projected accountability ratings for the 2023-2024 school year. We're going to go over them right now. Four schools received an A rating, 11 schools received a B rating, 11 a C rating, seven a D rating, and F schools, or five schools, I should say, an F rating, with an overall C rating for the district. What improvements do these ratings show, and what areas still need to be improved? Mr. Hernandez?
Well, first of all, as I understand, MISD is lagging in mathematics, and also in literacy. And as far as having five failing campuses, that's, that's just, that's not sustainable. My suggestion is, let's, let's look at curriculum. Let's, let's change things up to where we can say, our schools are performing at level, at grade level or higher, if, whatever it takes to get us there. We need to get those professional infrastructures in place to where they actually, our kids will actually get a good education, instead of just studying to take the STARS test. Thank you.
Mr. Marquez?
Great question. As I mentioned earlier, our accountability system, we started an accountability system seven years ago, and, you know, Lawstar Governance. We took it on a roadshow, we presented the community with it, we've involved district personnel to come up with the targeted goals, as to how we're going to accomplish those goals. But one thing I want to say is that when we talk about, especially when we talk about accountability, and we mention, you know, obviously, that there's an F-rated school, I just want our public to know that these, when you say, when we talk about that, we're talking about children, and we're talking about educators. So, one thing I will not do is talk bad about our educators, because they show up to work every day to educate our students. And, you know, Texas has changed the accountability system over and over, so we're trying to meet that goal.
Thank you.
So, it doesn't matter what district you go to, there's no two schools within a district that are the same. They're all different, they all have their own issues. And so, how can MISD help bring up kind of lower-achieving schools to achieve more, and help assure students receive an equitable education regardless of their assigned school? Mr. Marquez?
Well, you know, I'm glad you're talking about equity in individual schools, because when I started as a Board Trustee, the majority of our campuses have portables in them. So, when we're trying to educate a kid, we're not able to educate our children, because sometimes the equity doesn't exist just because of the building. And so, one thing we've done with Lawstar Governance is that we've come back and agreed to the system and the programs that be required with the professionals to say, okay, where can the movement be made, and how can we make it? It's not just randomly selecting a school to bring up, no, all of them have to move up. And we've showed a lot of progress with that over the years, and it's continuing to grow. The pandemic set us back two years, the anomaly still exists within the school system, but there is constant growth going on for the past three years in our school district.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez? Yes, sir. I think it starts in the classroom, and I believe that it also should start at the classroom, and of course, with administrators, their input is vitally important. It's a two-part system. Also, we also need to get parental involvement. I know that's tough in this oil field economy, because sometimes both parents are working. But we've got to come up with a system whereby we can bring those scores up where our students, where we can show measurable improvement. If what it takes is a different curriculum, so be it. We've got to make some changes somewhere, and if we're making changes for the better, stick with it. If not, let's try something else. Thank you.
We have a question from one of our viewers on our YouTube channel right now, and this is really a statewide issue. The question is, what do you think will happen if school choice passes in the legislature? Mr. Hernandez?
I think the first year will probably be rather chaotic, but I think it'll be, it'll be actually better for both public and other schools. School choice was signed into law, or was, if it's signed into law to where the parents have more say, I think education will be better for it.
Mr. Marquez?
Excellent question, because we here at MISD, we're the first in the state of Texas to develop partnership schools, and the most partnership schools, providing school choice. Now, when you talk about the voucher system, it's not exactly easy to talk, or have talking points about it, because I don't exactly have any substance as to exactly what's going to happen. But what I can tell you that's happened is that we're 42nd in the nation on funding schools in the state of Texas. The basic teacher allotment has not changed since 2019. So, funding for our schools has been going down, it hasn't been going up. So, to go start another system, when you can't even fund the first one you have, to me, it doesn't seem like the correct thing to do. The fact that educators could leave and not come back could be very devastating to the system in the long run.
So, what is your opinion of standardized testing? And how do you think that ought to factor into judging a school's or district's overall success and its performance? We'll start with you, Mr. Marquez.
Well, you know, standardized testing, it does tell us something. So, at the end of the day, whether you're a proponent of it or not, it tells you something. And one of the things it should tell you is that potentially, there's a lot of equity that doesn't exist, because especially here in Midland, free reduced lunch, it's not the same thing as free and reduced lunch maybe in South Texas, or East Texas, or North Texas. So, you might not be able to feed your children the same here, and so, you're not going to be able to have apples of apples. If you're going to, if I could have to compare myself to a private entity, you know, well, I have, we have standards that we're measured by, but private entity is not. So, you know, at the end of the day, standardized testing gives us information as to how we're going to move students along, what's needed, and how we should move the next year.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hernandez? Standardized testing just gives you an idea of where your students are learning. Not everyone learns the same. In my humble opinion, we need to not push the standardized testing as much as some people would like it. I really don't have a use for it, in as much as I don't have a size 12 shoe, not everybody wears a size 12 shoe. Students learn differently, especially those from different cultures, and those who come here to the Permian Basin, because we are the center of the petroleum business, we've got people from all over the world, they, they have a totally different way of learning than we have here. Whereas we have kids in China and Japan learning calculus in the sixth grade, we're still trying to figure out what the least common denominator is here at MISD. But as far as standardized testing, I don't approve of it.
Speaking of that, Midland ISD is 65% Hispanic, according to the district. Is there a growing need for bilingual and English-as-a-second-language teachers within the district? And if so, how can we address that? Mr. Marquez?
Great question. You know, that needs to be going on for a long time. So, bilingual education exists, you know, I think we have approximately, you know, 40-some languages we speak here at Midland ISD. So, you know, it took a while to learn the fact that you need to have someone to help the child transition from one language to the other in a bilingual setting. But once again, you know, that requires, you know, that requires a long-term growth process from educating students at a university to select a career, and then come and teach. But it's going to be hard, it's hard to get teachers, once again, because, because of funding, you know, and unfortunately, in the state of Texas, we're pitting districts against each other to try to find the people that we need to do the, that skill set, among others.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to be needing more and more bilingual teachers, especially Hispanic. Speaking as someone who did not speak English as a young child, I can tell you, it is a, it's a challenge. And when your bilingual teachers have a complete buy-in, and their job is to make the child fluent, it is indeed a challenge. You have to go out, you've got to have those, those teachers in place that are willing to make the decision, I'm going to help this child no matter what. As far as our Spanish-speaking, we've got a great number of kids, and I've seen this myself, where they help those children who are struggling in English, helping them with their work, their homework, their speech. I think it's amazing. I think our bilingual program here is doing a pretty good job of everything.
Thank you very much. All right, gentlemen, it is time for our closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their closing statement, and we will start with you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, first of all, I think that MISD has its challenges. I think the Board needs to step up their game a little bit. We don't, we can't rest on our laurels as far as our education goes. The one thing that I will say is, I'm very concerned about our, our children's security with the recent inf- with the recent influx of immigrants from other countries who, believe it or not, do not agree with our way of life. And unfortunately, in my line of work, I see this daily. And it is very alarming. You cannot learn unless you have a safe school district. Number two, I would ask all the viewers and listeners, if you know of a child that has medical needs that cannot be addressed here or because of economic reasons, please call me. I'd like to refer the child to the Scottish Rite and Masonic Hospital. I've done this, this the last 35 years of my career in law enforcement. The number is 1-800-237-5055. All their treatments and everything, equipment is free. All they want to do is be able to help every child. I've done this here previously. I think I've sent about 15 children to that hospital. And would urge anybody, please give me a call at the courthouse if you know of a child. I would be happy to help them. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And Mr. Marquez, your closing statement?
Thank you. First of all, thank you to PBS for believing in public education, for believing so far in public education that you're willing to hold a forum for candidates. I would like to say that public education is a cornerstone of our society. It's the safety net of our society. There's no system in the world that doesn't grow well without a good public education or an education system. I would also like to say that I'm extremely proud, you know, of, of all the work that MISD has done collaboratively as a community to move it forward. I'm just one board member out of seven to take decision-making in the process. But I take my job very seriously and have attended the majority of meetings. And I would also like to say that as a veteran, one of the things that you're still with is public service. And I'm glad to have the opportunity to have served, no matter what the outcome is. And the, the Midland ISD has proudly educated my children. It is proudly educating my grandchildren, extremely proud and happy for them. And I would like to thank all our partners that we have and partnerships that we have in this community that see us as a shining light and are willing to invest in us. Remember, the best investment you can make is in yourself. And I think Midland ISD is ourself that we can make that. Last of all, I would like to thank my dear wife, Delea Marquez, for her support over eight years of serving on this board. Thank you.
Thank you to our Midland ISD District Two candidates. We need to take a short station break, but when we come back, we'll hear from Midland ISD District Four candidates. Stay tuned.
Welcome back. We are coming to you live from Basin PBS in the Enwar Family Studio. I'd like to remind our candidates that the rules, as mentioned at the beginning of our program, still apply. We will now meet our Midland ISD District Four candidates, Mr. Matt Fries and Mrs. Emily Staton-Smith. We will now begin with opening statements, and I'd like to remind the candidates, you will each have two minutes. Mr. Matt Fries, we'll start with you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Fries. I've been a physician here in Midland for nearly 15 years. I am, I have two small businesses that I'm a president of, Midland Pathologists and DX Labs. I also direct five laboratories across the Permian Basin, mostly hospital-based labs. And so I'm involved in a lot with that. I'm a conservative. I'm a traditional conservative. And one of the reasons I'm running is because I want to get our schools back to the basics. I'm a big believer in teaching reading, writing, arithmetic, and also recess. I think it's very healthy for kids to get out and have a lot of playtime. And that will help them in their studies and get more out of their day. Anyway, I went to two really good public schools, not in Midland, in the central part of the country, which I attribute a lot of my success to academically and also personally. I had really, really good teachers who were very inspiring, very knowledgeable, and they still motivate me to this day. Ever since I've been in Midland, I came out here after my fellowship in Temple, Texas. I kind of, I heard the people were great out here and a lot of conservative, good conservative people with traditional values. And so I, I kind of expected the schools to be excellent. And I have been surprised to have heard people lament the state of our schools really ever since I've been here. Unfortunately, I've experienced substandard conditions in the schools myself with two of my kids. And so I've kind of always wondered why no one does anything about this. I kind of feel the board has not stepped up to the plate like they need to. And so then I asked myself that question and I decided to run for, for school board, kind of out of civic duty, and that I want to serve my community and our kids. So my, my main platform, I guess I'll get into later, so anyway.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Staton-Smith?
Hi, I'm Emily Staton-Smith. I'm running for the District Four position also. I am, my history with the district goes back pretty far, farther than I want to admit. That would tell my age. But I'm a product of MISD. I graduated from Midland High School as a National Merit Scholar. I received a scholarship to Texas A&amp;M and then to Baylor Law School. And I am confident that my public education here in Midland was what prepared me for a successful legal career. I currently serve as a lawyer at ExxonMobil, one of the largest global corporations in the world. And I credit my public education for that. My husband and I moved back here in 2012 and we found a very different Midland than the one I grew up with. Everything was going up, prices, home prices, the population, the number of Starbucks we had. The one thing that was declining though was our schools. As a current parent of an MISD student, this is something that I can't sit on the sidelines and watch happen. So my platform essentially, like many is, is that we need to improve our student outcomes. That's the number one most important thing this conversation should focus on. But to do that, we also need to give our parents a voice and a choice in their kids' education. That can mean numerous different things, transparency from the board, so a parent knows what's going on, better communication tools with teachers, so we can see inside the classrooms, and also a variety of educational learning opportunities for parents to choose from. And then finally, we need to support and retain good teachers and principals. We need to make the changes that encourage teachers and principals to stay in the classroom. I think that we have had a lovely public school experience. I want to say that. I've had a very positive one with my daughter, but I know that's not the case for many people in the district. And I'm running because I want to give the good experience that I've had at a wonderful school with a good principal to all the kids in MISD. Every child deserves an A rated school.
Thank you very much.
So we'll now begin with our first question.
Midland taxpayers voted on and passed a $1.4 billion bond in November of 2023 with 56% of the vote. How, as a board member, would you ensure that these dollars are used efficiently? And how do you plan to communicate that progress to the public? Mr. Fries, we're going to start with you.
Well, I think we need to really hold everyone accountable, have complete financial transparency with what we're doing, where those dollars are going, make sure that we have some kind of auditing method going on. I think we need to try to add as much value into these dollars as possible. It's a lot of money. And so we need to really look at our academic return on investment to make sure that, you know, we're spending money and we're going to get good results out of it. I think we can do that. I also would like to make sure, you know, we're, we're looking at the broad parts of education, make sure we're really putting a lot of money into the classrooms, allocating money to help our teachers succeed with whatever they need. Also, I think, you know, we, we need to look at some of our guidance counselor resources and make sure, you know, that whatever kids are going to do after high school, that we're putting money into things that are going to help, help with that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
Well, right now I actually serve on the bond advisory committee. So I've been hearing a lot of updates from the architects and from the team that's working on the bond. And what I've seen so far has been really impressive. I think the current board has done a great job of defeating some of our past bond debt. And I, and we have, I think, a financial accountability rating of A. As a board member, I'd want to continue that legacy. We get to see the budget and if things like inflation are causing the bond to stray, we have to prioritize the necessities over the likes to have. We can ask community partners to help with some of the fancier aspects, like the sporting facilities. But we've got to prioritize the things that will actually help academic standards and teachers and safety.
So plans for the bond include a new elementary school, two brand-new high schools, and the conversion of two existing high schools to two new middle schools, all to be completed by 2028. How will the district ensure that MISD can accommodate and sustain that growth? Ms. Smith, we'll start with you.
Well, I think it's hard to exactly say because it's hard to see what growth is coming. But I think that MISD just needs to keep on track. I'm going to ask you a question because I'm not sure if I understand the question. Are we saying keep on track to meet the 2028 deadline or to continue to meet the growing needs of our population?
I would say a little of both, you know.
Okay.
Stay on track, make sure you have the resources. But then how are you going to ensure that you, that you can operate those resources effectively to benefit the students with all this growth?
Well, I think first of all, we need great accountability from our board and transparency on what the costs are of this. The board is going to constantly have to watch population trends in this area to make sure that we're accounting for the new children that are coming in. Beaton Bow is building a huge new development that's going to pour more children into the north of town. And the truth is, we're going to have to watch those numbers to decide where will those children go? Where will they literally sit in a class? Does that mean, I know no one likes it, will there be portables again? Is there an area for expansion? Or will we need to start looking at another elementary school 10 years down the line? We've got to stay on top of that. We can't afford to wait.
Okay. Mr. Fries?
So I, I also kind of echo a lot of what she said. I also think we really, I really like a model where we have neighborhood elementaries. I really wish the bond would have kind of included more of that as a plan. I realize it didn't. So I would continue to try to build as practically as we can. You know, try to, try to really get value for our dollars on this $1.4 billion bond. Let's also see if we can really raise morale for this school district by improving academic outcomes, supporting our teachers. Let's, let's, let's raise morale across the board so that, you know, if we do need to build more elementaries, that we'll have more public will and public support to do so. I think also we need to maintain much more transparency financially and really get the public on board to, and seeing the success that our schools can achieve. I think, I think that will really help.
False school threats have become an increasing issue across MISD and the country. And it cuts into learning time and causes unnecessary fear for parents, students, and teachers. How can we crack down on these false threats? Mr. Fries?
Well, I think this is just one, one thing that we're experiencing now in our schools. It's an example of kind of decay of our country and also, you know, our region. We really need to enforce discipline. We need to get discipline in order back in our schools. We need to teach our kids and train them to be leaders. I would really like to see all of our kids learn the benefits of leadership at a very early age. I think we could do a much better job in, in setting example and using our kids as mentors and teaching everybody to be a mentor and not, not, you know, kind of the bully culture that we have. And if we can, you know, really kind of teach virtue and civics more, I think we can help these kids learn the value of doing what's right.
Mrs. Smith?
Well, I think as far as false threats, some of that, if it's outside the district, is really in control of our police. But I know as a parent, because I've received these notices, and they do, they make your heart pause and they're terrifying. What I want to know as a parent is that my child's school is safe. So that even if someone was threatening it, my daughter will be all right. I think we can address school safety in several different ways. I think the new schools will have a lot more safety features. But some of our existing elementary schools are still going to be more or less the same. You know, you can have the film on the windows that can help with bullets. But I think there are also things that we can look into, like technology that can be attached to cameras to detect guns at a greater distance, like are used at the border. And I think we've flirted with the idea of clear backpacks before and different things like that where we can ensure that these weapons aren't coming on campus by a student. I think if we improve safety overall, when you get these threats, you're going to know it's taken care of.
Keeping with that, that theme of safety, increasing school safety was an additional operative of the 2023 bond issue. What do you believe is most effective in protecting students from violence? And what additional safety measures would you put into place, if any? Ms. Smith, we'll start with you.
So I think the thing that is challenging when you look at some of these shootings and things that have happened around the country is like we, we had a law passed recently, we have to have an officer on the campuses. We're meeting that and that's fantastic. I don't know if I feel like that one person with a small gun is going to stop a weapon if it came on. And so I really do think technology can help us with this. I think cameras, I think there are softwares. And I want to see us have the top-of-the-line, best things to protect our students. They're our most valuable asset. And we have no excuse for not getting the very best cutting-edge, cutting-edge technology on our campuses. I do kind of like the idea of the clear backpacks. It can also help with drugs and things like that. But I think in addition to violence from the outside, we have students that are in fights. And I actually like the design of like the bathrooms in the new bond and the hall spaces that give more room because I think it will cut down. Like, I don't know if you know, but the bathrooms are a little more open, a little more European style. So you can't like duck in and beat someone up. They're just kind of open to the hallways. I think that will help reduce some of the fights.
Mr. Fries?
So I'm, I think having armed security at the, at the doors and having limited access points, locked doors, high technology as far as, you know, whatever we need to do for cameras at the doorways so that we can have quick response times. I also think we need to do a much better job of identifying sociopathic behavior and create an awareness to this. Most of these kids that have, have done horrendous things at our schools across the country, there have been red flags and people have just missed them or just kind of turned, turned and looked the other way at times. So I think our mental health aspect of this can really be helped. One thing I would really like in our new schools is to have, have some mental health resources so that when we have kids that are struggling, we can, we can either use telehealth or some way to kind of get them in a higher level of care than what they're experiencing. And that would also involve their parents.
Let's talk about parents. The literacy rate among adults in Midland is low. How can students get additional support that they need from their schools if they are unable to receive it at home? Mr. Fries?
So this is, this is a very major issue. I think, you know, we're kind of generations into this, unfortunately. And we can do a better job of engaging parents. You know, when we're busing kids all the way across town, You know, when we're busing kids all the way across town, it's hard to get parents really more engaged into their neighborhood schools. So I think that would be a start. The second thing I would really focus on is putting our resources into the classroom. Our teachers sometimes have 35, 38 kids. It's just way too many, and we can't really help these kids in the most optimal way. Again, I would apply an academic return on investment model, where there have been studies showing that if you have four-on-one tutoring, five-on-one tutoring sessions, instead of just one-on-one, you can really reach many more kids, and it's very effective in teaching literacy. And I would apply that across the district. Search for any and all options.
Mrs. Fries? Or Mrs. Smith?
Well, I certainly think that literacy rates are one of the factors that are very challenging right now and something that I've long been working on. I'm on the board of the Education Foundation and chaired a book festival here in town to try to get some of our schools excited and had an author visit some of our Title I schools. And leading up to that, we had programs, it was Pete the Cat, author Eric Littman, trying to get them pumped up. I think we can do things to make reading fun again in the classroom. But I think essentially, reading requires a lot of, I mean, you need to do it out loud with an adult to correct you. And there are different programs. My daughter's school has something called opportunity culture, where they have extra aids assigned because we're a Title I school. And part of the way they've used that is to break out into smaller reading groups and give the children more one-on-one time. There's no substitute for the parents being involved, and we have to take ownership that we are partners in our kids' education. But for parents that aren't involved, we need to get more time reading out loud in the classroom.
So we talked earlier about the bond issue, building new schools to kind of handle the growth of this area. But we all know that for years, teacher attraction and retention has been a horrible issue in West Texas. What types of measures do you think should be taken to kind of ensure that we have more qualified staff across the district to meet the needs of the growing student demand? We'll start with you, Ms. Smith.
Well, this is the big challenge, so we're all working on this. I think there are several things. I really like some of the initiatives that, like, the Permian Strategic Partnership has in place right now to try to grow our teachers locally. If you're already here, you're more likely to stay here. So partnering with UTPB and Midland College to get a pipeline of teachers to feed into our district, I think, is very crucial. I think as a community, it's really easy to sort of dunk on the district and be negative. And I think we need to acknowledge that that affects our teachers, that they hear our voices on Nextdoor and Facebook and Moms groups. And we need to be careful with our words and to be specific in our criticism and supportive of our teachers. I think the Midland Education Foundation, if you want to help a teacher, if you come away from this and think, I want to be involved, they have a wonderful micro grant program that you can fund to get teachers additional support in the classroom and to show in a tangible way that we want to help them. And also the Excellence in Education Program, where you can help with school supplies and things like that.
Mr. Fries?
So I've talked to a lot of teachers over the last month or so and even before then, and a lot of them just don't feel supported by the district. I think we really need to show them that we have their back. We need to reduce class sizes. We need to get more aides in the classroom. We need to make sure they have everything they need, that they're not buying their own supplies. Also, I think it would be a really good idea to get administration down from the central office building into the classrooms, especially as substitute teachers. This had been done previously, and I think this would really create an awareness for administration on how better we could, you know, have their back and support them if they're actually in the classroom on a regular basis, seeing what's going on, experiencing the challenges, and they would be able to support our teachers better. Also, I think, you know, just the discipline and order thing, we need to make sure when kids are disrespectful to teachers that we handle the issue and that the child will receive word that that's not acceptable.
Thank you.
You both are incredibly successful in your careers. As a board member, how would you balance the concerns of parents, teachers, taxpayers, and your fellow school board members? Mr. Fries?
So I direct five labs, and I would really work through policy as a school board member. I think policy is kind of a dynamic process, and you need to have really good policy, and you need to get people to follow the policy. So there's some accountability mechanisms that I would use to really help with this. I would really also hope to create a good culture at our school, all across from the students, to the teachers, to the administration, to the principals, to the parents, and the community. I think we can do a better job of just building a good, vibrant culture that's supportive of everyone. And the hospital actually did this about 12 years ago. They brought in a consultant, and we have values coaches now, and they do a really good job of keeping everyone on track and creating positive change.
Mrs. Smith?
Well, if you elect me, this is going to be my top priority. And as a parent in MISD, it already is in a lot of ways, but this is the number-one thing to focus on and to put all the effort into. I think the way that you balance all the competing needs that you're going to face as a board member is you engage in a lot of dialogue. You engage in dialogue with your parents through different meet-and-greets and discussion forums. You go visit your different PTAs to hear how the parents are experiencing it. But you also need to meet with your teachers, and you need to get direct feedback from teachers in schools on how your policies are affecting them, if they're making their life easier or harder. And you need to build rapport with your board members. You can disagree, but you need to do it civilly, and you need to focus on civility in every interaction with the parent, with a teacher, with the administration, with your fellow board members. And keep in mind that you're going to have policies that hurt some people and are going to make people unhappy, and you owe them the consideration of your time and your ears to listen to their complaints, even if you don't agree.
Let's talk about parental rights. How would you ensure, or how do you plan to ensure that parents have more control and transparency over their children's education, especially when it comes to curriculum and classroom content? Or is that even an issue with you? We'll start with you, Ms. Smith.
I think the curriculum is very important. I think that most parents have some questions, I mean, especially when I look at my daughter's math and she's only in second grade and I can barely help her. It's like, I don't know, I don't think I'm an idiot, but this does not make sense to me. So I think that it's important as a board member to give feedback on your experience and what your lifetime experience with your child. I think that as far as transparency, I think technology can help a lot, because you have to balance that, yes, parents want input, but there's one teacher for all of these children. So you want to create communication methods, like an application on a phone, where messages can be sent in a way that doesn't overly burden the teacher, but still allows a parent to ask questions, correspond, and get quick answers.
Mr. Fries?
So I think parental rights are big. I think curriculum is a big issue. I've talked to people who have had trouble moving in and out of the district, just because sometimes it can be a little bit different. So I really like good, standard, traditional curriculum that parents kind of have grown up with, that have worked for hundreds of years. A lot of times when we're putting things on the internet and everyone's just kind of glued to a laptop, it's really hard to help your child. So I would really like to get our books back into the classroom, kids learning study skills, learning how to outline your textbooks, take good notes, listening to your teacher, do math the traditional way. And then also, you know, with some of our student counseling sessions, I want to make sure that there is 100% consent with some of the parents. I've talked to parents who have been, their kid has been going to counseling, and they had no idea, and they even are starting to carry a diagnosis. So I want to make sure that we have 100% informed consent from parents when we're doing things like this, and that everybody's on board, everything is transparent.
Thank you both so much. It is now time for our closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their closing statement, and we will start with you, Mr. Fries.
So thank you for having me tonight. My main platform is teacher support, academic quality, and getting more discipline and order in the classroom. Education is very important to me. As I said earlier, I had great public schools. My mom and grandma were teachers. I really am a big backer of teachers. My dad was a pastor. He was always ministering to people, and he was a great teacher also. I've been a coach here in Midland for many years now, and I also teach medical students, residents, and lab techs. I also am a Sunday School teacher, or I have been, not right now. But if I'm elected, I'm going to fight for our kids to have a superb education and a culture of mentoring, kindness, gratitude, hard work, resilience, and pursuing excellence. I will fight for our teachers to be treated with the respect that they deserve and the professionals that they are, a bedrock of our community and our country. I will stand for our community so that public schools are recognized as outstanding. And our schools, they need to be outstanding because I really want them to attract, you know, many professionals across the region to stay here. Right now, we're really having difficulty with that. We're losing doctors and other professionals because our schools are just not up to what they were hoping for. So I want our schools to attract teachers, nurses, police officers, all professional, into the community. I also will stand up for the taxpayer so that your tax dollars are spent wisely and used to obtain value in education. I'm a big believer in value, not just high prices. And last, I will do my best to stand for what is right. I'm a Christian, I'm a God-fearing Christian, and, you know, I fear God, not necessarily consequences of doing what's right when I have to. I ask for your support and vote. Vote for Matt Fries, District Four trustee. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. And your closing statement, Emily Statton-Smith?
Well, I want to just start off by saying, because I think not to honor the good work that has been done in my daughter's public school would be unfair, thanks to Fannin Elementary and Mrs. Tagel, Ms. Hamm, Ms. Byers right now have been amazing. But when I think as a mother of what it would be like if I lived in a different district and if I was at Henderson or Bunch or Dave Zavala Jones or Bonham or Long, where the schools are failing, how I would feel sending my daughter in every day, telling her, you need to go get grid grades, but the district hasn't done it for you, I struggle with that. And that's why I'm running, because every student here deserves to be in an A-rated school. We need to aim for that. We need to set our sights high. We have so many innovators in this town. We have so many people working on complicated projects, seismicity and recycled water, and we're solving things. We can solve this, too. We've had good education in the past, and we can have it now, and we need it fast. We need to not make excuses. We need not to wait. And whatever we need to do to help these students now, there is such an issue if you wait until a child is in junior high to get them in a good school. Those crucial years, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, can determine whether or not a child has a successful life. Honestly, they count prison beds by the literacy rate in third grade. And we need to, if we need to charter something to get a school turned around, we need to do it. This is the most important thing. But also, as I've said before, I want to be on the board to help parents have a voice and a choice in how their child is educated. I want them to understand what's going on. I want them to feel confident in what's happening, like they have a control and a say, and they understand the board decisions. And then again, our teachers are our first line of defense, and we've got to figure out a way to retain them, to support them, and to recruit them, frankly. I've been a community volunteer for a long time. I'm on the board of the Young Women's Leadership Academy, the Education Foundation, the Bond Advisory, and Teen Court. I want to use that experience for you. Please give me your vote for District Four. I'm Emily Statton-Smith. Thank you.
Thank you to our Midland ISD District Four candidates. Now, we're going to take one last short station break, but when we come back, we'll hear from the Midland ISD District Seven candidates.
We are coming to you live from the base in PBS in the Anwar Family Studio. I'd like to remind our candidates that the rules, as mentioned at the beginning of the We will now meet our Midland ISD District Seven candidates, Joshua Gwynn and Brian Murray. We will begin with opening statements. I'd like to remind the candidates that each will have two minutes. We'll start with you, Mr. Gwynn.
Good evening. I'm Josh Gwynn, and I'm running for MISD District Seven. I would like to start off by thanking the PBS for hosting this debate tonight. I would also like to thank tonight's sponsors of the event, Diamondback Energy, Permian Resources, and Mr. Murray's employer and campaign donor, Ms. Wagner. I have lived in Midland for 37 years, and I am a product of MISD. I graduated from Lee High School in 2005. My wife, Felice, and I have four children. We have a sophomore at Midland Christian. We have a fourth grader and two second graders at Scarborough Elementary. For the last few years, I've seen my children's schools struggle academically. As I sat back and watched continuous changes in leadership and failing grades, I told myself, we must do better. There has to be a better way. After talking to my wife, I decided now is the time to step up and be a part of the solution. Tonight, you're going to hear my opponent talk about A ratings and finances, how he's going to support our teachers, academics. The reality is, he's been on the board for close to a decade now and has failed to deliver on those promises. Under his leadership, spending has increased and grades have gone down. I will bring knowledge I have gained over the last 18 years in the oil and gas industry to the board. We need board members that deliver results. As a District Seven trustee, I will listen to our teachers and hear what they have to say and work to give them the tools they need to be successful. I will listen to my constituents and give them a voice and make sure their voice is heard. As a business owner working in the oil and gas companies, daily I know what it takes to work together to achieve a common goal. In my line of business, everything is data-driven, and when the data is trending in the wrong direction, we lose our job. Today is the day to ask District Seven to look at the data and ask yourself, is the data trending in the right direction? Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, so thank you. Good evening, and thank you to PBS and their sponsors for making this debate possible. My name is Brian Murray, and I'm running for reelection for trustee for District Seven. Elections like this are hard for people who don't know either candidate. Anybody can say anything, and you must decide if you believe it to be fact or not. I'm an open book. I've lived in Midland for 24 years, and if you've been out in the community, you've seen me there beside you. I really enjoy our community, seeing our community succeed. If you have any questions about anything I've done or happened during my time on the board or where I stand moving forward, I encourage you to contact me. Once you get your answers, please share with your friends. I just ask that you share the truth. My voting record is public, and while some decisions have been difficult, I feel confident in my record. Being married to a public school teacher who recently retired and my holding position on the school board, I'm much more aware of the education landscape than most people. Many of the issues we've experienced in MISD are the same concerns shared across the state and the nation. In my seven-plus years on the board, I've devoted myself to making MISD a better district and have invested time to be a good board member. I bring a special skill in finance, and I feel that is an important component of the board. I've advocated for your children and our teachers since day one. My wife even has me reaching out to people on social media, trying to help their educational problems, and I would just remind you, always come to me. It makes it much easier. I'm elected by District Seven, but I serve all the students in Midland. It is vitally important that we continue to focus on student outcomes. We must start early in literature and let that knowledge expand into math and critical thinking. When I first decided to run in 2016, people told me it would be hard and would be hard to please everyone, and I found that to be true. And it's hard because I have a servant heart and I'm a people pleaser. In the end, I pray, I consider data, and I make the decision I feel is best for students. Thanks for tuning in tonight, and I hope you find that I'm the answer for you.
Thank you.
that knowledge expand into math and critical thinking. When I first decided to run in 2016, people told me it would be hard and would be hard to please everyone. And I've found that to be true. And it's hard because I have a servant heart and I'm a people pleaser. In the end, I pray, I consider data, and I make the decision I feel is best for students. Thanks for tuning in tonight and I hope you find that I'm the answer for you.
Thank you. We'll now begin with our first question. Mary Kay.
I would like to start by making a reminder and a reassurance to our viewers. Our sponsors have no hold over the questions that we ask, nor do we communicate with them prior to any of our debates. We're going to start talking about that bond that was passed in November of 2023. Midland taxpayers voted on it and passed it for $1.4 billion. How as a board member, can you ensure that these dollars are used efficiently? And how do you plan to communicate that progress to the public? Mr. Gwynn, we're going to start with you.
So I got asked that question a lot last year. Do you support the bond? Do you support the bond? Are you voting for the bond? And I will tell you, I did not vote for the bond. I just didn't feel like $1.4 billion was going to help our academics. So I just chose to stay silent. I thought it was a very divisive topic. So I didn't want to influence other people's decision. Going forward, I did say that I would support the bond and that still rings true today. The bond passed, Midland spoke, that's what they want. Let's stand behind it. We just got to make sure we do right by them and do exactly what we said we're going to do with that money. So.
Thank you very much. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, so I was a supporter of the bond last year because I've been in our schools and I've seen the crowded overcrowding and, and the number of students we are packing into classes, but also know how important it is for us to, to take on reconfiguration. And so it was really important for us to build two new high schools where we could bring the freshmen onto the high school campuses, cut out some of that transfer time that we waste between campuses, get the sixth graders with the seventh and eighth graders so there are curriculum lines, and then create extra spaces on our elementary campuses. So we will be able to move pre-K through fifth grade on, on a particular campus and free up extra seats, which the extra seats also help us focus on pre-K seats. And it helps us really to get to kids early and get started. And I think just as a one percentage, just in this year alone, we've, we've increased pre-K seats 26%. And I mentioned earlier in my opening that I think it's important to, to really get to the literacy part early. And so I think that's very beneficial. So I'm, I'm super happy that our community got behind us.
So let's talk about resources, mainly teachers. We all know that the $1.4 billion bond issue is, is going to build some new schools, new facilities to address the growth of students. But we also all already know that, that attracting and retaining teachers in West Texas has always been a really tough road to hoe. And so what do you think should be done to not only attract more teachers, but to retain them and address all this growth that Midland's facing? And Mr. Murray, we'll start with you.
Sure. So I appreciate the question because I do advocate for teachers a lot and, and I think that's a really important question. And so we've already started attacking that problem and how we deal with getting teachers here in Midland and several different aspects of how we, we're doing DOI or bringing in teachers and, and going through an apprentice program. But I think it's important, once you have a teacher here, is, is the campus culture. And we've talked a lot about that over the years and I've been supportive and I've worked with every individual that's ever told me that they had a problem with what was going on on a campus. And so I feel like that's where you start. You know, as I've been on the board, we've actually raised teacher pay from in the high 40s up to over 61,000 now. So we've addressed their financial needs to a certain extent. Plus, we've added the TIA for the teachers that are, that are mastering or doing great work. And so that's part of how we, we just really address this. It's just taking care of our teachers, making sure they're getting training, making sure we're taking care of discipline so that teachers aren't having to deal with discipline on a daily basis, but those things are handled in their classroom.
Thank you. Mr. Gwynn?
Yeah, so I think MISD's done a very good job of recruiting teachers. They put that on Facebook every year, 98% staff. We do not do a very well, good job of retaining teachers. We've lost 350, approximately 350 certified teachers over the last three years and that's a problem. I mean, consistence, the only way we're going to increase our academics is by consistency. We have to lower the turnover. That's with any business. That's my business in the oil and gas. We have to tackle the turnover. And by doing that, we got to foster an atmosphere to where teachers are comfortable. We got to handle the discipline issues. Teachers don't get paid to go to school and discipline kids all day. Granted, they will have to correct them every now and then, but teachers are there to teach our kids and we got to make sure we're giving, giving them the tools to do that.
We have a question from social media and I'd like to ask it exactly how it was stated. What are your thoughts on hiring people who are not certified to teach? Mr. Gwynn, we'll start with you.
You know, I think, I think that's the same with every industry. You have teachers, I think as long as they're working towards it and we're giving them, we do have a, a hiring problem in Midland. It's every industry. We have one of the lowest unemployment rates in the state. So if we hire a teacher right out of college and they're working towards their degree, that's, I mean, I'm okay with that. But we have to have a process in place to make sure they are working towards that degree and certify, or certified to be a teacher. I think there's something special comes from a teacher that most, or some people just aren't qualified to do that. You know, I think there's psychological issues that teachers deal with. I think the proper training and the resources we, we need for a teacher.
Thank you. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, so we have a lot of students and, or teachers in our district that are actually coming in that are degreed individuals. And they may not have a teaching certificate, but they can fit right into a classroom where they have a specialty or, you know, they may be able to just jump right in and, and don't really need that certification. I do appreciate the fact that it was mentioned that there's a national shortage of teachers across the, the United States. And so we really have to do what we can to get teachers into the classroom. And it's important because first instruction that we deliver in a classroom is the most important. How do we get to our kids first and best? And so I think part of that is, is, you know, looking how we can expand district innovation and how we get those teachers in the classroom and then working with our MCLs and how we have MCLs standing over new teachers and how we can really address their shortages and what they see and what someone that can come alongside them and help them grow can really do. And so I think it's, 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 it's great that we're doing it and it's just a much needed problem.
Thank you.
So in any district, it's, it's pretty much a given that, that no two schools within that district are alike. They all have their different issues. They all have their different challenges. But, but how can MISD help bring up the struggling schools, you know, to achieve better while ensuring that all students within the district receive that equitable chance at a good education? We'll start with you, Mr. Murray.
Okay, great. So I, I think that is a real challenge for our teachers in the classroom because we do, we do have to grow every student from where they currently are to the next level and, and grow them. And so you may have a teacher in a classroom that has some that are just barely meeting the standard, there's some that are really outperforming. And so how do you spend your time working with that group? And so what we've seen is some breakout sessions of how we, we isolate on kids that are kind of in the same category and how we meet their needs. And then you, then you take the kids that are on the higher level and how do you challenge them? And I think that's as, as big as issue as, as the lower end is because every parent wants their student or their child to be, to grow in their academic life. And so I think it's important that we make the effort to do it. And, and a lot of that, you know, I've had feedback from teachers is just how do we address kids getting moved to the next grade level that are on target?
Thank you. Mr. Gwynn?
Yeah, so I think it's, you know, our demographics in Midland are always, are, we have a huge widespread of demographics. We have a, a huge Spanish speaking population. I think we, we do a pretty good job of focusing on ESL. I don't, I don't know if we have enough of them. Then the main thing is consistency. You'll hear me say that word a lot. I use it in my everyday life. It's consistency. Every school's going to be different, but our policies and procedures and the way we attack it needs to be consistent across the board to ensure every kid gets quality education.
Thank you.
Citizens in Midland seem to closely connect the roles of the Midland ISD School Board and the City of Midland and Midland City Council. This has most recently been an issue with Midland High School's newest location. So in your mind, how should the City of Midland work with MISD? And how are they and should they be separate? Mr. Gwynn?
Yeah, so I think, you know, there's, we, we have several different taxes, taxing entities in the City of Midland. We definitely need to garner a relationship with other tax entities because everybody's kind of fighting over the same tax dollars, right? So we need a school board that works with the city. We need a city council that works with the school board. You know, we saw it with the, the crossing guard situation this year. I just, I don't believe that was a good look for either one of them, you know? A month before school starts, we're arguing about who's going to pay for the crossing guards. And I think there's been a disconnect between those two taxing entities. And for me, I, I think we need to be able to work together. I think I should be able to call down to the city council and say, hey, this is, this is what we're seeing or this is our thoughts, what's y'all's, and have that relationship with the two. Because I mean, at the end of the day, we're all Millander's, right? And we're all here for the same person. That's to make our community the best it can be. So we have to learn to work together.
Thank you very much. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, so a couple of years back when I was board president, we, we had a monthly meeting where we met with leaders from all taxing entities in Midland, which it was a city, the county, the hospital. And, and, and so we came together in the college and we talked about how do we be good partners? How do we work together? And so just recently, we were actually held another meeting just with the city, just to say, hey, we're partners. We're here to do, service the same people. We have the same idea of taking care of Millander's. So how do we make this work better? And I think that open lines of communications are really important. I think that what the city does is vitally important to what we do in Midland. And, and I think what the school district is vitally important. So we just need to be able to work together and really share that communication and not, it's not a blindside thing ever. You don't ever want to bring something up and just say, hey, you didn't deal with this. It's like, hey, let's talk about this here and let's get a, come to a solution and then let's move forward.
How, how do we improve parental involvement? You know, districts, a public school district takes all comers. Okay? But, but, but we all know that parental involvement, the level that parents are involved in their children's success in school has a big determining factor on how well that student does. And I think you could talk to any teacher out there and they'll tell you that a lot of times they can only do so much with a student. If, if their parents aren't involved in their success, many times it can be fighting a losing battle. So what can we do to improve parents' involvement in their child's education and, and help the district basically prepare more students to, for, to be successful adults? Start with you, Mr. Murray.
Sure. So that's a great question. And, and, and what I know is that a couple of years back also, we met with the PSP, which is a great partner for MISD. And we talked about the shortfalls and where we needed to get better and how we needed to address issues. But I pointed out to the guys in the room and I knew, you know, most of them. There was, I think, one I didn't, but I knew his assistant. And I said, your kids did great in MISD. Your kids did great in MISD. Your kids did great in MISD. What's the, what's the concerning pattern? What's, what makes this all work together? Why are we seeing that? And it was because those parents were involved. And I think so, we have to find a way through transparency. We got to break communication barriers. We have to get people into our schools. And I heard at a recent forum that someone said that, well, we have an issue getting into schools. Well, that's not MISD's policy. Because if you want to go into your son or daughter's classroom, you're more than welcome to come up and be a part of it. You need to see what's going on so you can help. And we have a lot of great parents that do that and we just need to learn how we're going to get better to continue the trends.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Gwynn?
Yeah, so for me, I'm going to have to disagree with Mr. Murray on this one because I do have three kids at the elementary school and I do not feel like we have an inviting relationship from the school district. You know, we hear it all the time. Parents want to take their kids' food or go eat lunch with them. And they're, we just can't. You got one day a month that you can go eat lunch with your kids. So to me, that's telling the parents, you're not welcome here. Stay away. I think we need to, I think we need to have a culture where the parents are invited and they are feel welcomed. You know, my wife is the pres, or the treasurer of the PTA. I think their PTA this year's probably had the biggest enrollment, membership drive that, that school's had in a long time, you know? We just have to, we have to foster an atmosphere where we feel welcomed because parents are the biggest part of a child's education, you know? Teachers have them for seven and a half hours a day. A lot of it is at home. So we have to have that relationship where parents feel welcomed at the school.
Thank you very much. We have a social media question asking the candidates to differentiate between school choice and school vouchers. I would like to expand that question and also ask what your stances are on school choice and if you support policies that would allow parents to use public funding for private charter or homeschooling options. Mr. Gwynn, we're going to start with you.
Yeah, so for me, school choice is easy. I'm, I'm all for it. Being on a, running for the school board, it's not my job to tell a parent how to educate their child. It's my job to make sure their child gets a good education if they decide to come to Midland ISD. As far as the, I think you asked about vouchers if I'm, so vouchers, I'm, I'm all for those as well. I mean, people, we talked about this a little bit last week at the Realtors Forum. People's like, oh, so he's against public schools. No, I'm not against public schools. I'm just against my tax dollars not following my child. So as a parent, if I decide to send my kid to a private school, which I have one at a private school, I feel like my tax dollars that I pay for that child should follow my child.
Thank you. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, so school choice is, is a big thing that we talk about and, and a lot of times it gets confused with the vouchers. So this is a great question. But school choice, we are the leading district in the state of Texas in offering school choice in our district. We have all of these partnerships with Young Women's, IDEA, Third Future, the, the dual language course. And so we are leading the way in that effort right now. And if you go back and look at my voting record, you will always see that I voted in support of those. Because at the time, what I felt like is we were doing the best for kids. And so I'm all about school choice. I think it's something that the state has really helped us out with because they've funded it and they've helped us where we can get to additional children and give them extra resources to get their educational needs. When it comes to vouchers, I'm not an advocate. And I'll tell you that because I don't think you can be with public schools if you're going to be a leader. But the, the real deal with vouchers, and I don't go back to Kamala Harris a couple of weeks ago. She said, I'm going to give 50,000 to every homeowner. Well, what did Republicans say? And I'm agreeing with them. It's going to raise the price of houses. Same way with vouchers that'll raise the price of education.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. It is now time for our closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their closing statement and we will start with you, Mr. Gwynn.
So as an MISD parent, I am tired of my children being looked at as monetary value and used as a political pawn. I am running for District Seven to bring back the values and integrity that was instilled in me as a proud Millander. I believe all children deserve the same quality education I received at MISD. I believe our teachers are the backbone to our children's education and we need to ensure we're giving them the tools, the tools to support them and set our children up for success. We must tackle and deal with discipline issues in our schools that prevent our, prevent our teachers from focusing on academics. As your District Seven trustee, I will put our children's education before anything else. I will make sure I listen to my constituents and, and have a well thought out plan before spending millions of dollars on purchases. Our current board and my opponent have failed our children for too long and it's time for Midland to say enough is enough and stand up for our kids. It's time for a change. On November 5th, I'm asking you to let me be that change. I'm Josh Gwynn and I'm first on the ballot and I'm asking for your vote. And I just want to say happy birthday to my grandma. It's her 89th birthday today. So happy birthday, Grandma. Love you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, happy birthday, Grandma. I would like to just clarify a few things that my opponent has said because there is a lot of really good work going on at MISD. And my opponent seems to want to drag out negative nonstop and it kind of comes from his mentor. But what, what you can see is we've addressed behaviors. Aggressive behaviors were down 38% in MISD like just this last year alone. And we're seeing an improvement in that trend this year. National Merit Scholars, we went from two, two years ago to four last year to 10 this year. So we're, we're growing scholars. Our AP Scholars are up 137%. We saw an increase in our A and B campuses from 14% to 31%. So that's 121% increase in just one year. And we're going to do better because our goal is 70%. So we're going to keep pushing that mark. My opponent also mentions the fact that we spend too much money. Well, I, I went through audit reports and got actual data, not something he was given from a data point from his mentor. And I can tell you that in the last, in the last eight years, actual spending has gone up 37%. Inflation was 35%. But when you factor in that we grew over 4,200 students or right at 4,200 students, we have only raised our spending 17%. So we're not even half of this, of the inflation adjustment spending on our kids. So we're not wasting money. We're not doing that. We had, we had over 100% growth in just what we're doing in capital projects and maintenance in our schools because the board felt like it was important. We're going to ask for a bond. Are we going to take care of our schools? And we are. And so I think it's important to point out the, all the little things that you, you kind of take jabs at because we've done a good job. We have a 96% rating in our financial rating. And also, we have, we have saved the taxpayers in Midland just since I've been on the board, $75 million. $75 million. That's a lot of money. And we've done that through refinancing debt, through defeating debt, paying off debt early. And so we've saved our taxpayers. I'm Brian Murray and I would appreciate your vote for District Seven.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gwynn, we are going to give you 30 seconds for rebuttal since you were referenced.
Well, so we talk about my mentor a lot and I do have a friend that's on the school board. But the data that Mr. Murray keeps saying that I am incorrect on, I pulled that out of the bond packet. So if I'm misinformed, it means they misinformed me. So our spending in 2014 was roughly a little over 9,000. We're spending over 17,000 per student today. We're spending over $17,000 per student today. According to daily average attendance in the last 10 years is one of 3,300 kids. So if we're doing a good job and one in three schools is failing, if we're good with that, I guess, I mean, we're just going to agree to disagree on that one.
I've got just 30 seconds. Just one quick thing.
We are unfortunately out of time.
Well, I would just like to say I appreciate Ms. Wagner for being a sponsor of Basin PBS because she does it nonstop around the year. She's a big-time supporter. And him taking a shot at our people that give money to our community was really wrong.
Thank you very much.
It's called transparency and ethics.
With that, we conclude tonight's debate. I'd like to thank all our candidates for participating in this year's Midland ISD Districts Two, Four, and Seven debates. We urge all registered voters to cast your ballots. Early voting begins October 21st and will continue until Friday, November 1st. Please check the voting office for polling locations. We would like to thank our sponsors, Alyssa Noel Wagner, Diamondback Energy, and Permian Resources for generously supporting this program. We'd also like to thank the Elizabeth Jaeger family and the Anwar family for their continued support of Basin PBS. Programs like this are possible because of you, our members, and our viewers. If you aren't a member and would like to become one, please visit basinPBS.org for details. I'd also like to thank Basin PBS Board staff members and crew for tonight's program. I'm Pat Canty. On behalf of Basin PBS and my co-moderator, Mary Kate Hamilton with First Alert Seven, thank you and good night.